So I always introduce myself and say, what's the most important thing to you? You know, just so I can get the pulse of the city. I like the pulse. For me, the airport, I really like the idea of decommissioning the airport and adding housing. Like I said, we are really short on housing. We don't have enough supply. People like, especially older people, and Boulder is getting older, people like slow change, not fast change.
Yeah.
So if we want to bring people with us, we have to explain why something is good, why it's important. And then we can bring, let's say even 70% of people with us. But if we see that we're going to get into a 10-year public relations war over something, let's do stuff where we can actually get it done faster. Not only does it get people upset that you're not listening to them, and by upset, I mean screaming at you.
Yeah.
Okay. But we don't want it to be reversed because it didn't work out well, or because people felt like they weren't heard.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Ogrin, and for episode 33, I spoke with Tara Weiner, who is a member of Boulder's City Council and is running for reelection this fall. Our conversation wandered around and through many topics, including affordable housing, the need for more transitional housing with wraparound services, missing middle housing, building housing at the airport, whether housing supply is inelastic or if demand is, occupancy reform, and parking minimums, among many others. I admire Tara for her consensus-building leadership style, her commitment to listen to people on all sides of an issue, her willingness to learn, and her service to our community. I want to admit that I feel a little bit sheepish about some of the long, rambling questions and statements I made during this interview, and I want to thank Tara for being a sporting conversation partner and for exploring a wide variety of topics with me. I hope you enjoy this conversation with Tara Weiner. Program note, I am irritated that I recorded four interviews via Zoom before realizing that I should have adjusted the audio settings to better capture back-and-forth conversation. You may notice that when speakers overlap, Zoom drops one of the voices, and this can sound a bit glitchy. Suffice it to say, future recorded Zoom calls should be much better. Thank you for your patience. Hello, Tara. Welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for making time for this today. I wonder if you could just start off by giving us a quick introduction?
Hello, Philip. I'm so glad to be here. I am on City Council since November of 2021, and I'm actually going to be running for reelection in the next cycle. In November of 2021, you know how much I knew about housing? Nothing.
Amazing.
Not housing, not land use. I mean, I'm honestly a deer, what is that phrase, a deer in the headlights, a deer without the headlights, whatever that phrase is was me. So I dedicated the last year and a half to learning as much as I can, so hopefully we'll get something good happening today.
Well, thank you. I think it's notable or funny, amusing, how we met each other. I don't know if you remember this, but my wife was working at Whole Foods.
South Boulder.
Yeah, in South Boulder, and you had introduced yourself as a City Council candidate, and I don't remember exactly how it came about. Well, I think she probably would have known that I was trying to interview as many City Council candidates as possible at the time. So she was just like, oh, have you met Philip Ogrin, who's my husband, you know? And then we, so that's how I got your phone number, was through her. Because you hand out your phone number pretty readily, I noticed. I was impressed, at the Ruckus Caucus, you got up and said, here's my phone number.
Yeah, but nobody's called me. I'm waiting for one single phone call, people.
Okay, well, I feel it'd be a little weird for me to.
No, that's not true. I did have two people. I had two people. That's not true.
Cool. Well, anyways, we, I mean, I called you. So like, you know, I called you that summer. We talked a few times on the phone about whether you were going to be on the podcast. And I told you basically that I wasn't going to give you a pass on tough housing questions. And then you were like, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna make me look bad.
No, it's not that you're gonna make me look bad.
Something like that.
I have a lot of expert areas, like for instance, the supply chain, printing, marketing. I mean, my expert area did not help in housing, I can tell you. And one thing I know about Boulder is there's a lot of experts, and so you cannot fool your way through any of these conversations. People know in approximately like five seconds if you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's right.
So it would be better for me not to have that meeting, right? As I look back on it, I did the right thing by not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm so glad that you're here today, and I'm looking forward to, like, kind of one thing I just wanted to start off with is like, and maybe the answer has already been given perhaps, but just like, what do you feel like you've learned in your first two years on City Council about being a good City Council person?
Well, it's, in some sense, it's much easier to run than it is to be on council and then run again, because you have your voting record. And I guarantee you that no matter how you vote, there's always going to be somebody mad at you. I can show you all the emails. It doesn't even matter that I give my life to meeting with people. If you write to me and say, meet with me, I meet with you.
Yeah.
You do one little bitty thing, somebody disagrees with, and forget it. They write to you, how could you? I'm ashamed that I voted for you. I'm talking, and it doesn't have to do with what side you're on. It's just in general.
Yeah.
People want you to agree with them 100%, so I started saying, well, there's nobody that agrees with you 100% except yourself, person. So, you know, I do the best that I can. I never shut off listening for new information, and that is something I keep doing. Also, I meet with as many people as possible, because a lot of people know stuff here, and I can learn so much. But also, I don't have the same lived experiences as a lot of people, so how else am I going to learn what they learn, feel what they feel, experience what they do unless I hear about it?
Yeah.
Which is why, one of my, one of the things I've learned the most about is how our permanently affordable housing works, what we do with people, how do they get vouchers? I didn't even know what the word voucher meant. I never knew, I absolutely did not know what it meant, and I was voting on things that first or second week of November, and I'm like, this isn't right. I don't, I don't know enough. So I quickly read as much as I could and learned that for me, one of the most important things for me, my values, is to have people that are in our affordable housing units be safe and feel cared for and not feel like second-class, you know what I mean, to feel respected.
Yeah.
And I spend a lot of time meeting with them just to check in, so.
Well, that's cool. You might be interested in the interview I did this morning. It was about trauma-informed design. So thinking about how we build our buildings and lay out the entryways and design the apartments in such a way that people who have experienced trauma, and a lot of people in affordable housing have, in fact, a large majority have, how to make them feel safe and feel like they can thrive in a housing project. So anyways, I'm glad to hear that you're, that you're interested in that. She had a lot of really, she had a whole framework for thinking about how to make buildings safe and comfortable for people that have gone through trauma, so.
I am actually interested in that. You'll have to send me that link.
Yeah, you bet, you bet. Well, so I'm kind of curious now, like, what's an example of some nasty grams that you've gotten after voting the way that you decided to vote?
I'm ashamed that I voted for you. That's one of my favorites.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to go through nasty grams.
I mean, I don't mean to like call out.
No, no, here's the thing. I get it when people get upset.
Yeah.
I understand. So, you know, I don't really get upset when people yell at me. I just try to explain that I'm doing the best that I can. I don't get upset. I only will get upset if people are screaming and rude, then I do get upset. But other than that, I ask people, I give my number so I can hear from people, and it doesn't have to be nice things either.
Yeah.
Everybody out there in blog land or whatever, podcast land.
All right, well, so I think we ought to dive into housing, if that's okay with you, so. Man, as you know, now, it's such a big issue, and there's so many facets to it. I was reading through your webpage here about, you got a, you got a nice summary of housing solutions on your, on your website, kind of calling out reimagining transit corridors and repurposing shopping centers and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't rewrite my website from two years ago. It's still the same. But one thing is for sure, being on City Council, having a full-time job, and then running and babysitting my grandchildren mother, that's four jobs. So I said to my website, it's good enough. Website, you're good enough, because I'm way too busy trying to solve problems. So reading through the website, it's about, I'm not saying that I disagree with what I said, but things are super complicated in housing world, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what do you want voters to know about your position on housing?
So there's, it's multifaceted. First of all, I am from, and I say this often, I'm from a very dense area in Brooklyn where people lived on top of each other, to the sides of each other. We played in an actual lot of garbage. That was where we played. And when they built a park, it was made out of concrete, because people, I guess the city of Brooklyn didn't want things stolen. Like, if it wasn't nailed down, it was stolen, so. So we had this big wall, this was before pickleball, and you take your paddle and you hit it. And, and so, concrete was good for us, but we also really missed trees. So one thing that's important to me is for our affordable housing, what I mean by that is our permanently affordable housing, you know, that you need to have a certain percentage AMI to apply, has urban canopy, is well-designed, makes people feel safe, and makes them respected. And because I had that experience, and a lot of times your life experience does define you, you know, when you're young. When I moved to Philadelphia, I felt like it was the country, because I saw trees. It was very exciting. And I lived in West Philly after that, so still city environment. So for that reason, safety is very important for me, and one thing that I've noticed about affordable housing, our affordable housing units, is a lot of them, the people don't feel especially safe, because we, let's just say that in the world of vouchers, for instance, mental health partners will give vouchers. We're trying to do a few things and combine them. So we give mental health, we give vouchers for people experiencing mental illness. We give vouchers for people that could also have drug problems. And we also combine them with, let's say, families in the, let's say, 30% AMI, who are just trying to make it. But we're supposed to be, there's not wraparound services. So a lot of the, so to make people successful who are struggling in their lives, you have to have wraparound services, like what we're doing for Bluebird, where there's going to be 24-hour wraparound services, because for somebody to go from being homeless to having a house is a big jump. And we have to support them, and to me, our goal should be making it successful for them, and to do that, we must have those wraparound services. Because let's say one person has a breakdown, this happened at one of the apartments, she set her house on fire, her apartment on fire. It affects the families, the kids, whatnot. I visited another place where there was, it was actually a drug deals were going on, and I, I don't even have words, but the outside of the apartment was a desk with a sign. It's, and I'm like, you know, how do little kids feel who are just trying to have a good life?
What did the sign say? Just like?
At 7:00 PM, so everybody can guess what that meant. But anyway, and I did interview them. I'm kind of like you. I interview people, and for sure, that's what they were up to. But so for me, I want people to feel secure and have a happy life. Quality of life is people move here. I just want people to be happy and secure, or I want people, my goal is for people's lives to be a little bit better than before I met them, in whatever I can do. And I obviously cannot solve the drug crisis. I can't solve the mental health crisis. We don't have enough services for people. Not even if you have money, never mind if you don't. So it's almost impossible to fix, but I want to be able to do my part in fixing them. And so for me, transitional housing, meaning having a place like Bluebird where people who are really struggling with mental illness can go and feel supported. I spoke to, okay, so this is a true story. I went over to an affordable housing, I call them projects, because that's what we did, but I don't think that's the name of it. And bikes would be, and there was one apartment that was a chop shop. And also, there was another apartment that was like.
Just the one over in Boulder Junction?
No, a different one. There's so many.
Yeah, for sure.
So I went over there and I met with the people, and the guy who lived there said his grandchild won't come anymore. She's too scared because of the drug traffic, you know, that's happening there. And I said, that's not right. This guy just wants to have a happy life, and he wants his. So I found out that, oh, how do I put this? Let's just say, keeping confidentiality, but I did my best behind the scenes to make things better for that person, and to this day is better.
Yeah.
So that is, a lot of my time is spent. Another housing, affordable housing, I went to this person who is in a wheelchair. Maintenance accidentally flooded her apartment. She lost everything while she was in the hospital. You know, all this kind of, and also, the big problem we have with a lot of affordable housing is management companies are far spent. They don't have enough labor. They, they can't do all the work they need to do. So sometimes they're really short with their customers, these people that are in affordable housing, and they feel disrespected. And it's not a great feeling when you're waiting for your paperwork because you need it, because people are very nervous in affordable housing to lose that security of housing, you know? They live like sometimes week by week, month by month. So a lot of times I try to help with that as well. So I do a fair amount of that.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you for sharing all of that. I had like three or four questions as you were going. The, the thing I was kind of, the last little bit that you said about property managers. I think about, so one thing I don't actually know is, when Boulder Housing Partners has a property, do they subcontract out to property managers, or do they manage those properties themselves?
Okay, so I wasn't actually referring to Boulder Housing Partners. I'm actually referring to some of the privately-owned affordable housing, because like the Nest, for instance, is not with Boulder Housing Partners. Lumin is not. There is Thistle, and Thistle's just sold to another organization. And so these are the housing developments I'm talking about, the non-BHP housing. And I'm not blaming anybody, because ever since COVID, as you know, we've had a huge problem with labor shortages. And being, if you don't have, how do I put this? If you're, you just took a job as a manager of affordable housing, one of your skills is usually not taking care of somebody who's having a mental breakdown.
Totally, yeah.
But if there's not wraparound services at this particular place, which let's say it was promised, but let's say MHP doesn't have enough labor, enough staff, then the manager is the one that is working, helping this person, and they don't, that's not their skill set. And that's why they're having a hard time, these places, holding on to managers and them not quitting. And then it adds to the insecurity people feel when they just lost this manager that was supposed to get them paperwork so that they could file their paperwork.
Yeah.
So it's a bit of a mess, and, and like I said, I don't blame anybody. Usually, it's just a series of problems, and since COVID, we've had our fair share of combined social problems in this country that happening all at once.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, yeah, so I guess my next question is, like, what's a, what's a path forward? We, I mean, it's one thing to describe the problem, and I mean, that's a great first step, is to just show up and start listening to people and their stories, and then, and then talk about it, you know, so. I, I'm not, I'm not like implicitly giving you a hard time, but I am curious to know, like, what, what's next? I mean, how do you move forward through this?
I'll give you my opinion.
Yeah.
My opinion, and I work with another City Council person in trying to get somewhere, is we need to place people that are experiencing mental health issues and substance abuse issues in housing that has wraparound services, like Bluebird.
Yeah.
So Bluebird is being built now. I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, me too.
I also personally think, we're going to be having some peer housing, a peer housing program. I just don't know if it's going to be good enough to help the people that are barely getting by mental health-wise. And so I feel like we need more places like Bluebird. Always the question is money, and also where to put it. So I'm not saying that it's an easy solution. But that's why Lee Hill is successful, because they have wraparound services. They have the support that people need to transition from, let's say, being unhoused to having an apartment.
Yeah. Can you remind me where Bluebird's going to be located?
Yeah, on 30th Street, I think right near Pearl, between Pearl and Velma. I think it's being built right now.
It's part of, it's part of the TVAP 1, the Boulder Junction. Yeah, okay, I didn't realize that. Yeah, so I, the woman I mentioned, Laura Rosbert, who was on the, on the interview this morning, they, they were consulted for that Bluebird project, and they, they worked on that. So that's, that's a very cool.
I might have even have met her at the opener, like, they had an event.
Yeah, it's a good, there's a good chance. Okay, well, so then, maybe we could shift into.
Yeah, let's move on to the next subject.
Yeah, to like, missing middle housing, for example, would be something I love to hear about, so.
Yeah, so that's one of my most important things, but also extremely hard to solve. And I don't have to tell you why, because you're a housing expert, aren't you, Philip?
I play one on a podcast.
So when you say missing middle, what is the amount of money that somebody needs to make? So there's many, there's many things that I want to do. I don't feel like we have enough supply in certain areas. Like, we have, we have a lot of permanent, a fair amount of permanently supportive, apparently affordable housing, and then a fair amount of upper-class housing, or however you want to call it.
Lots of luxury condos.
Lots of luxury condos. So where are we, how are we going to, with the price of land, how are we going to get some middle-income housing? As far as permanently affordable middle-income housing, we do have this program, but I've heard from the grapevine, meaning different developers that I've talked to, to get wisdom. If people are putting a lot of money, they have, they want equity out of their house. They're way less excited than you would think to have something that they can't make as much money on. Would they rather just go to Lafayette so they could buy an expensive house? Or would they rather, you know, cap the amount of money they could sell it for, so?
And you're talking about, just to be clear for listeners, you're talking about not renting affordable housing, but buying at a, at a, at a rate that's on a fixed resale schedule?
Correct. Yes. So we do have a program that, that we, that we're helping people buy middle-income housing. The question is, is how big is that market?
Yeah.
How badly do people want that? I don't know.
Okay, so, so the.
So in other words, let's say that you can buy something for $80,000. I'm making it up. I mean, excuse me, $800,000. That was great. I left out a zero.
Yeah.
But it's not allowed to appreciate because it's permanently affordable, but it's not, it's, let's say, only by 3%. Would you really want to take your heart, your money and use it for that? Or would you rather be able to get housing where it has regular appreciation, like that, that's where you want to buy your housing? And so that's the first question.
Well, I would say that city staff would answer that question by saying, hey, we have really positive responses from the people who have participated in that homeownership program.
They have.
I've also heard anecdotes of people who just, you know, feel like they made a bad bargain, and it didn't, didn't work out, like, and for me, it kind of offends my sensibilities, you know? When you think about equity and, you know, our, our history of racism and the way that our, our built structures reflect the history that we've come out of, and now we turn around and we say, oh, yeah, okay, you missed out on all those, all those equity-building, wealth-building, generational opportunities that white people had back in the 1950s and 70s. And now we say, oh, okay, well, here's your opportunity, but then we like clamp it down and say, oh, but you can't really generate much wealth, because we're gonna put you on a schedule that says what you can resell that house for. It feels, I don't know, it feels kind of weird to me to, to tell people what they can sell their house for.
Well, it's true, and I have the same anecdotes as you, so I'm mixed, and I'm not sure, jury's out on that one. But I would say that everybody always touts the holiday neighborhood as the greatest. I love the holiday neighborhood. It was nicer than where I grew up, much nicer. I love it. And that big green space, beautiful. But didn't the city own that land?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so that means the only way to get housing, everybody wants to duplicate that, but to duplicate that, we have to have land the city owns, or it's going to be too expensive. So what do we have left? We have the airport.
Yep.
We have the planning reserve. For me, the airport, I really like the idea of decommissioning the airport and adding housing. Like I said, we are really short on housing. We don't have enough supply. So for everybody that's listening that says we have an inelastic supply chain here, that we have an inelastic supply, how do we know it's inelastic unless we actually have enough supply?
I think you mean inelastic demand.
Actually, both.
Both, yeah, okay. All right, I, okay.
They actually use the term inelastic supply. Here's the thing, in this city, everybody's like an economist somehow.
Yeah, right.
And the word inelastic is bandied about, but you don't really know it's inelastic until you actually have enough supply. That's what I'm trying to say, and we don't have enough supply. So how do we really know? So what the economists are saying, I hear, tell me if I'm wrong, Philip, is if we had more supply, the housing prices wouldn't be skyrocketing as much as they are. They probably will still be going up, but maybe not as much. Is that what you hear?
Well, I think, so, so just as a correction, I'm pretty sure inelastic demand is, is the, the key phrase here. And that's, you don't know, you don't know if it's inelastic until you see if there's, if you add enough supply.
Yeah, that's what I did mean.
Yeah, so.
Then I have to tell all the people that keep using the phrase inelastic supply that they're wrong.
Well, okay, I mean, I could be wrong too. Like I said, I just, I just played.
For our next show.
Okay, but yeah, I think, and I think the, the issue is that, you know, we've, we've had housing policies in place for decades that have constrained supply
Yes.
relative to demand for a very long time. And then we, then we turn around, we're like, oh, my gosh, housing is so expensive. Why is it so expensive? And we all know why it's so expensive, but then we, then we say, but anything we do now is just going to exacerbate the problem somehow. And I, I like, I always want to push back on that. And I feel kind of like in the way that you're saying is, yeah, we don't, we don't know what, what demand is until you actually give people a lot of options and a lot of price points.
That's right. Yeah, we don't know what demand is, and now a lot of houses are sitting in my neighborhood, which is skyrocketed. A lot of houses are sitting there on the market anyway, so we'll see if that does affect. It might be that it is an elastic demand.
Yeah, yeah.
But it might not.
Well, I guess, one of the problems is that it's, it's not, the, we, we think about supply and demand and housing prices in terms of, in terms of the, the price of a home, which I know that sounds kind of silly, because it's obvious, but it, but the, you know, when you really, you know, just for me to put on the economist tag, because I think I'm an economist too, as one does, is that it's really about the land market, and we don't really think about it in terms of land market. And one of the, one of the difficulties is that as soon as you say, hey, you can build a tri- as soon as you say, hey, you can build a triplex on this lot, the value of that land goes up because now you have more ability to do more things and sell more stuff. With, you know, you can make better use of that land. Um, and so that's a very confounding factor. Like, like it's my opinion that you could, you could allow twenty plexes on every quarter acre lot throughout the city and land values would, would go up. There's no doubt about it. Housing prices, unit prices might go down. It's, it's hard to, hard to know for sure.
It's hard to know. I will say though, that I would rather, and this is what I did want to mention, because a lot of people get super mad at me for many reasons. I would rather do something big at the airport or the planning reserve in terms of supply.
Yeah.
Then just put a few measly duplexes in my neighborhood, which I know we have to do a lot of things.
Yeah.
But if you look at what happened with the land bill, and I supported the land bill except for the occupancy part. Right? And that is because of many reasons we don't have to get into today.
Oh, well, I mean, I'd love to, you know, put our boxing gloves on and, uh, and go, go around or two about occupancy. Cause you, you, we, you know that I, I care about this issue.
Well, here's what, but I tend to be, when it comes to people, people like, especially older people and Boulder is getting older. People like slow change, not fast change.
Yeah.
So if we want to bring people with us, we have to explain why something is good, why it's important. And then we can bring, let's say even seventy percent of people with us. But if we see that we're going to get into a ten year public relations war over something, let's do stuff where we can actually get it done faster.
Yeah.
And more of my, one of my things is that we don't have enough labor, you know, we don't have enough labor. We don't have enough labor in the city. We don't have people in the planning department, try to call there or transportation. And one of the reasons is because people can't afford to live anywhere near here. And a lot of people that let's say have to work for the city would have to come, they can't work remote all the time. So now we're asking them to take a big commute. So what I would like to do is find a way to make like rentals or rentals or even ownership possible for that, those people. And let's say, let's say in the, uh, at the airport, that I haven't figured out how, but one of my thoughts is how do we get a, a developer or a nonprofit to buy that land, not a lot from, from the city, let's say, to buy it or even lease it. And I don't know enough about that kind of stuff, to be honest, because I'm a fake economist. And it's only a year and a half in, even though I majored in economics, that didn't help because at eighteen, I just did not care. So let's just be clear. And I majored in it and I'm still like, I don't really remember. But anyway, to have, we have to somehow have housing options for people who want to work here and don't want to drive far.
Yeah.
We have to do that in a way that doesn't have to do with the market. We have to, and the market's not going to make it for us, right, Philip?
Well, um.
Unless we give incentives to developers, we have to give them incentives.
Yeah, I guess the, I, I, I always want to push back on what the market will and won't do in, in the, when it comes to housing, because like we have so, um, uh, you know, from so many angles distorted the market and, and and people, red flags go up when you say you distort the market because they're like, oh, you're, you must be some kind of free market libertarian. No, I just, I just want, I just want like a healthy, a healthy market where, where there's lots of options at lots of price points. And that's kind of my, that's kind of my definition of a healthy market. And there's lots, I mean, we're doing lots of things that, uh, that make a healthy market impossible. And, um, so, I mean, it is important that we.
I named them, named them, Philip.
Oh, well, um, um, yeah, name the ways that we distort the market. Well.
Just like three. My husband always says, do things in three towers. He says, just name three things. He always asked me to name three things.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have five square miles of asphalt at least, uh.
You mean like parking lots?
In the parking lots and the parking. I mean, you live on your street, no, your street isn't so bad, but there's a lot of streets in Boulder that are like forty feet, forty-four feet wide. That you can have, you can have parking on both sides of them and still have two-way traffic. I mean, and, and how many of those streets kind of just sit empty all day long? I mean, that, so like, I mean.
What do you mean they sit empty?
Well, uh, I, I don't know. Have you ever driven through South Boulder during?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's forty feet of pavement, uh, as far.
What do we do? Redo the streets at this point? Do we redo the streets?
I'm just saying that like, that was, that was not a, um, that was not a market driven or sustainable. That was just something that someone in a greenfield, a generation before just, just gave us, you know?
That was dumb for many reasons.
So.
One of the reasons is, is you know that those big streets, people speed down them and the more narrow the streets, the slower the cars go.
Yeah, yeah. And we did, I mean, one of the reasons purportedly is that we did that so that the gigantic fire trucks can you know, do U-turns and cul-de-sacs and stuff like that. So, um.
I believe it.
But yeah, I'm not doing a very good job of, of that, that, that probably wasn't.
Put you on the spot so you can know how I feel when you put me on the spot.
Oh, yeah. I mean, single family zoning is, is a classic example, right? We, we used to, um, it used to be the case that if you owned a large house and, and your budget got tight, you would rent out a room. And that was a perfectly socially acceptable.
Yes, it was.
You could sort of carve off part of the house and make it, put a little oven or a refrigerator in there.
Isn't that so stupid that you can't do that? So stupid.
Well, I hope that you supported the, the ADU, uh.
Of course I did.
I, I have, I don't have your voting record.
That's okay. Of course I did. But yeah, nobody can talk me out of ADUs. Listen, when my immigrant family came over to Brooklyn, we all, the entire family, including the extended family, lived in one brownstone. And by brownstone, I don't mean those really nice ones. Because how else are you going to live when you don't, you know? It's, it's a, and in fact, when I moved into my house, we, it was very extensive. It's, it's, it's a nice house and we bought it. This is the nicest house I've ever owned. I'd be honest, I didn't have such nice houses in my life. So I feel like I'm always on vacation. Took a long time. Um, but in the basement is practically an apartment, but we're not allowed to have a, a kitchen down there. Why?
Yeah.
So silly.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to say so stupid or is that inappropriate?
Is that not PC anymore to say stupid?
I don't know. It's not, or how about this? It's so silly that I'm not allowed to have a stove down there or kitchen.
Yeah.
Just to sing.
Right.
Why? Why wouldn't I want an entire family of my relatives or whoever, or even friends to live down there? Why not?
I think of, um, the house that I live in, um, uh, uh, Zillow, Zillow said it was worth about seven hundred thousand dollars when I moved in there. And now Zillow says it's worth over a million, which means that my landlord has made more in appreciation than the high rent that she charges me every month. So you take, you take the appreciation divided by the number of months I've been there. It's a mu, a number much larger than the, than the rent that I pay. And, and it's a, it's a weird, it's a weird thing to think about a house appreciating that quickly. Like what is, what does that mean? Um, and I, I do all these little thought exercises, like the four lots that, um, that kind of like I can see from the back deck, you know? I can imagine a developer coming along and saying, hey, this acre would be super productive if I could build anything I wanted to on it. Okay. So, I mean, we don't allow that and that, there's lots of reasons for that. There's good reasons for it and there's bad reasons for it. And, and we, um, but, but it, but it is, it does have an effect on the marketplace, right? We, we basically say, no, we can't make more efficient use of this land because we have all these zoning laws in place and.
Yeah, but we changed the ADU thingy. We worked, I mean, I think we.
Oh, no, I mean, I mean, like if you could literally clear the houses, whatever you wanted to. You could, that land could be worth fifty million dollars, you know, in a year, you know? Right now.
Done them with the AD discussion. Yeah.
And right now it's worth a million dollars, you know, or, or a four million dollars, probably a million for each of those four houses. And, um, one of the, kind of one of the perverse ways of thinking about that is, um, even though it's expensive for the homeowner to buy that house, point two, one million, one point two, whatever it costs for those houses. It's still, you know, from, from like a market manipulation point of view, it's still like this massive subsidy for the homeowner. Because that land could be worth so much more if you allowed it to be better utilized.
Well, what I like to do, remember I like to bring people with me, you know? Okay. So somebody called me up and they said, Tara, I hear you like duplexes. How can that be? So I said, listen, don't get your dander up. Just come over to my house. I want to take a walk with you in my neighborhood. So, and he's a friend of mine too, and he's young too. So it's not like he's, you know, the senior.
Okay, yeah.
And I said, look at that house over there. It was pretty big. I said, can you visualize that house being two houses? And he said, well, yeah, I guess I can. So I said, well, can you visualize it being three houses? He said, yeah, I guess I can, but not four. So if you remember, I found, you know, I always say I care about what people think and I'm taking it in and I noticed there is you know, four to, four to some people seems crowded and like you're really changing the qual, whatever the look of the neighborhood, but two, you aren't really, okay? Or three even, right? So let's say that's his view. When I was asked at the Ruckus Caucus, what do you think about four plexes? I immediately said, my friend, that freaked him out.
Yeah.
So I say to myself, I'm not interested in being on council and doing nothing and making speeches. That's not why I'm on council. I'm not even good at speeches. I'm bad at them. You just have to watch how bad. I always like, can't remember words. I'm like, what word do? So I'm much interested in doing things. So if I want to do things, let's add to the supply, whether it's elastic or whether the demand is elastic or inelastic, whatever that word is. If I'm going to add to the supply, I'm going to do stuff that I know is going to pass. That will be the airport to me is a no brainer because it, it, it's just like, it pleases a really small amount of people. And it's really noisy and people suffer from the noise and we're put on, and I would imagine that there's lead involved. And it's land that we could.
I'll have to imagine it. There is, there is lead involved.
There is lead involved. I know because in, in, uh, at the Rocky Mountain Airport, they found, I think it was in Superior, kids with lead in their system.
Yeah.
So I know there's lead involved. So to me, that's like, that's a no brainer. And, um, something where I believe that a majority of Boulder would agree with. And I'm always interested in what does the majority want to do? I, I have a really good friend, Matt Benjamin. Do you know him?
Yeah, of course. He's on city council.
You know, I have a good, a lot, they're all my friends. They're all my good friends. And he says, we need to be leaders, Tara, and we need to show the way. And I always say, yeah, but what do the people want? And by the people, I mean the majority, let's say the seventy percent, because there's ten percent on each side. I'll never please if I tried. So it's, I guess, different ways of being a leader, isn't it? Like, do you try something where you think that's the best way? But you're going to get a huge amount of pushback? Or do you try to go with? Do you try to make society better, a little bit better? And you know, you can carry the people with you. That's always the big question. You know, old people tend to like slower things and I'm old, I'm sixty-four, so I might as well say it now. And now you're supposed to say, what? You look so good for sixty-four.
I can't believe it. You don't look at never sixty-two.
I'm about to be sixty-five and I can't wait because I need my insurance to be cheaper.
I, it's funny because, um, someone recently referred to a population of people at a housing complex as, uh, being forty-nine. And then he said, so they're older people. And, uh, I was thinking, oh, good, because I'm forty-eight, which means I'm not older people just yet, you know? But, um.
Well, okay. So we did the airport.
Well, yeah, we, we, we almost, we, we've, we've name checked the airport, but I just wanted to say that, um, you are speaking my language when you say let's decommission it and repurpose it for housing, because I love that idea. And.
I mean, you know, Mark, I'm giving all the credit to Mark Wallach.
Yeah, okay.
He begged people to do that. Well, and I did not know this when I got on council. Who knows half the things? You don't know anything when you get on council. One of them is, is you have to have a work plan and you do that in January. And the problem with that is, is I didn't even understand that whole concept. So I didn't have, I didn't even understand it. So there was not a world where I was going to make the right decisions about what to do, but I felt Mark was right at the time. We should de, work on decommissioning the airport, but we couldn't get the votes. The majority, you know, you had to get five, I guess, or six, or however it was. But now I'm really.
To get it on the work plane. Well.
I'm re, if I get reelected, I, that's going to be like one of my number, top five things that I need, I want to get done.
That's amazing. I love, I love that. Um, and I, I just want to just point, um, mention that I'm actually on the community working group. For the airport, um, master plan update, the, the.
I heard that that was difficult, that whole situation.
Yeah, it's, there's lots to say about it. I'm not, maybe we should have a conversation when, when I don't have the record button.
Offline. We'll have it offline.
Yeah, right. But, um, but, uh, man, I, I do want to say that if you've never been up to the airport.
And I have been.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing property, you know, like.
Yeah. First of all, it's pretty ugly now.
Oh, yeah. No, it's, it, no, I mean, it requires a little imagination to, to see this, the, the neighbor, the beautiful neighborhoods that could be there. But in terms of like, um, the, the, the way it's situated and the elevation of it and the views and everything. And it, it, yeah, for me, I go up there and I just see beautiful neighborhoods that are well.
And you're like, what a pity. We could do the holiday times, whatever.
Yeah, times six or seven.
Great thing about the holiday neighborhood is it's all different types of housing like you brought up. You have, you know, your three bedrooms, you have, because a lot of families need, when I went to visit Effa, this is a really important concept. When I went to visit Effa, they told me that would be the people in charge of Effa, and I'm so bad at it. Don't get mad at me, people at Effa. I just forgot your name. No, just kidding. Um, they said that, and she was the mayor of Lyons. Do you know who I'm talking about? She's so great.
Yes, I do know. I'm sorry.
Get her name too?
Yeah, yeah.
You'd be so mad. You're very special ex-mayor of Lyons who now runs Effa. Um, she said that a lot of people in the lower income brackets would like three bedrooms. Because if you have a girl and a boy, there's a point where people want to put them in separate bedrooms, so they can have privacy.
Yeah.
So I have worked hard to figure out why it is that we don't have a lot of free bedroom permanently affordable housing. And you could say, was it the chicken or was it the egg? Like, for instance, when I asked BHP, they said, well, we don't have enough demand for three bedroom housing. Well, maybe that's because it's too expensive, right?
Yeah.
Um, and like you said, we need to charge less for it or give vouchers more freely or whatever we have to do, but that's a different subject completely. So I think the great thing about the airport is we can make those family oriented three bedroom houses and a lot of our, uh, lower income people want to have green space where they can have family barbecues and such.
Yeah.
So that's really important to them. So that's really important to me.
Nice.
Can't just have apartments and then giants, single family homes.
Yeah, well, I think, um, you know, that's, yeah, that's the, that's the thing that you learn from walking through holidays, that there's a lot of ways of thinking about what a neighborhood can look like. And it doesn't just have to be apartment buildings. It doesn't just have to be single family homes. There's lots of stuff in between. And that's sort of like the very definition of missing middle is, is, uh, thinking about the, you know, I mean, you can put three bedrooms in fifteen hundred square feet and it still feels like a lot of space, you know?
A lot of it is the design. You know, I love Lauren, you know, Lauren?
Yeah, of course.
She, I, she said, what, I told her, one of the reasons why I wanted to run is because I really like pretty buildings. If you design something well, you can do so much with it and people don't notice that it's dense because they're like, whoa, that's so nice. So a lot of it depends on, you know, setbacks and urban canopy and tree canopy. You know, that's everybody's favorite word when they're running is, I want more urban tree canopy. And, um, so to me, when people got upset, they got upset at thirtieth and Pearl because they thought it was ugly. But if it was maybe done a little bit differently, and I know why it was done like that, so we don't have to go into that, but opportunity zone and all that. But still, how something is designed is really crucial for the future of our town.
Absolutely. Well, and that's, that's what's so great about the airport property is that the city owns it. And you can, you can do any, you know, you can kind of, I mean, you, you kind of asked, how would, how would you make that work? Well, I mean, the land is extremely valuable. And so you can, you can kind of structure it so that you can sell what you need to, um, recoup whatever it else that it is that you want to subsidize, you know? And, and, uh, we can, we can integrate the transportation and the housing and the green space and make it just really beautiful and car light. Uh, that's, that's kind of my big thing is I would like to have to, to be on the bleeding edge of building car. to, to be on the bleeding edge of building car light neighborhoods where not everyone expects to drive right up to their door and, or into a garage and get out, there'll be, you know, parking around the periphery and they'll be walkable. You know, in communal places in the, in the neighborhood instead of lots and lots of parking. So that's my, that's my dream for the airport.
Yeah. Well, my dream is um, protected bike lanes, but that's a whole nother story.
No, that's, that's.
I thought I was going to die the other day. Sometimes I feel like I take my life into my hands. I'm full steam. One drunk driver and I'm done.
Oh, yeah. Uh, tell me about your e-bike. Is that new?
You mean my ghost cycle? No. Uh, my husband's disabled. So the only way he can, his major exercise besides swimming is being on his e-bike. And for years I said, he'd be like, you should bike. I said, I, I don't like biking. I don't like biking uphill. There's nothing fun about it and I really care about fun. That's one of my major.
Live on a hill.
Yeah, like I'm not taking a regular, I can't, I'm not strong enough. So I found an e-bike that works for me. I'm very short, even though I don't look short. And it's like my happiest hour, except that right now it's raining and I was planning on going after this meeting. And now I can see that that's not happening. Cause I ride my e-bike so much that my tires are bald and it's not good. I have to get new tires.
Yeah.
But anyway, yes. And so I was really excited that we A, passed that, um, even though a lot of people are already biking on the um, open space and up canyon, who knew you weren't allowed? Oops, I know I did. Um, so that's exciting, but also um, you know, working on better protected bike lanes. I actually felt safe riding a baseline the other day.
Nice.
I mean, I'm not going to say that some crazy driver won't hit me, but there's less of a chance now.
Uh, baseline west of Broadway or where?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I haven't, they, they, they reconfigured that?
Uh, well, they repaved the road and while they were repaving, they put in all sorts of structures.
Okay.
Um, it definitely feels safer. I mean, is it Denmark? No, or wherever that European places people always talk about that has the best protected by? Where's that Denmark?
Um, yeah, there's a few places on the, on the shortlist, but yeah.
I've not been there, but everyone talks about it, but assuming we're never going to have that in the near future because, you know, we only have so much in our budget. This was good enough. And my motto is, in my life with four jobs, it's gotta be good enough. No, I'm kidding you. But.
Well, so.
Are you having fun? Because to me, Philip, if you're not having fun, this whole thing is a waste.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I mean, uh, I wouldn't do this podcast if it wasn't fun for me because like, it's not like, it's a pretty niche podcast. It's unlikely to go viral and make me rich, fabulously rich, you know?
Well, you and I do the same thing. I sit around and say, how can we make things nice housing? How can we make things housing for the people that cannot buy housing here right now? If somebody comes up to me, this guy named Ryan, and he said, Tara, you've got it. I'm, I, I said to Ryan at a, at a bike meeting, Ryan, if you're listening, you know, I'm.
I, I assume this is Ryan Shoehardt perhaps?
It's not that Ryan.
A different Ryan.
Different Ryan. And I said, what can I do for you as your city council representative? Because to me, being business, the entire city, including everybody is my customers and I need to make my customers happy because as happy as I can, because that's what I do in my regular business. And my suppliers are the staff and also other city council people. I can't do anything without them. So I try to treat them as good as possible. Um, but anyway, Ryan said, Tara, this is how you can help me. I can't find a place to live. So believe me, I struggled with the bedrooms, not that occupancy, I struggled with it a lot. So why I went to four and I'm still getting huge pushback from every side, that seemed to please no one.
Yeah.
Is because I felt that it was pushing the boundaries a little bit, but not too much that we can't like check on whether we have the infrastructure to take care of some of the possible unexpected consequences that could happen, especially on the hill and at Martinakers. So I would rather start with four and see how that works before jumping to five. That, and, and if it doesn't work, why doesn't it work? Let's say, for instance, we only have now one code enforcement person. Everybody else quit. For the whole city? So how well do you think we're going to be able to enforce our laws? Not really well. That's one expert area that we have is to make laws and then not enforce them. We're really good at that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, uh, I mean, my sensibilities around having a healthy democracy uh, uh, suggest that we should not be passing ordinances that we're gonna um, arbitrarily enforce or poorly enforce, you know? So I guess when people say, oh.
I'm with you on that.
And actually, and actually, so that's actually really offensive to me when people say, oh, but it's not even, it's not even enforced. It's like, that's part of why it's a bad laws because we, we, you know, as a democracy, we don't, we shouldn't have laws on the books that we can just enforce at will arbitrarily when, when it's convenient for us to.
Okay, so let's take then, and I agree with you. But that ship has sailed because we do a lot of enforce, we do make a lot of laws, right? Let's take 20 as plenty. How many people do you think drive 20 miles an hour in their car?
Man, I, I don't know.
Like nobody?
Yeah, well, our streets are designed for 35 miles an hour is the problem, as we mentioned.
You know, that's another law that everybody was like, great, we're going to save lives. Well, yeah, but very few people drive 20 miles an hour. I, I know that. You know that.
Yeah.
My e-bike drives 20 miles an hour.
Exactly. I'm, yeah.
So that's a whole nother podcast. Listen, I come on every week. We can discuss life. I love this kind of thing. Like, what do we do? Do we keep enforcing these laws that are good? I mean, do we keep passing laws and then not enforcing them? What do we do, Philip? You tell me.
Yeah. Well, I um, I full heartedly endorse um, removing occupancy restrictions and we're moving, moving, moving towards uh, uh, ordinances that address specific negative externalities that, that people say might come from occupancy. Um, and if it's, if it's about trash, or if it's about noise, or if it's about um, dormitories on the hill, um, then let's, let's figure out ways to target the actual issue. But um, but yeah, for me, occupancy is one where it's like, it's um, I mean, I've been steeped in it for a long time, so it's hard for me to not see it in a black and white sort of way. And, and we didn't really tee this up.
Never think in black and white. There, you see, gray is always the best. That's my favorite color.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's true.
But people do get upset at me about that. They're like, why? Why, why do you always look at the other side? Whenever somebody says, this is how I feel, I try to think about the other side and bring in all the arguments of how the, another person would feel that disagrees with me. So that I can then come to the conclusion that I need to having as many, you know, sides or facts in my head as possible, right? So then I tend to be more like, let's compromise, which I can tell you is not that popular today.
Yeah, yeah, no, we like to, we like to make our camps and then um, yell at each other from, from.
If somebody said, these are your people. They said something to me. I said, I don't even have people, you know, my people are my grandchildren that. Or my children who are always telling me what's wrong with me. And that's what you want to hear. You want to hear honesty from people. And when you said that you, okay, I wasn't going to ask you this, but don't you think that I'm, I would be a great for you to vote for me in the next election?
Well, uh, one, one thing that I love is your endorsement of decommissioning the airport. I'll just put that out there. I'm, I'm super excited about that possibility. And I think it's a, it could be, you know, with the right messaging and the right kind of visionary um, yeah, communication that it could be widely popular. And I love, I love the notion of something that can be done and it would have a huge positive impact on the city. So.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for um.
Well, for all the people that are really listening, my, my, what do you call it? Good points? What talents? One of my talents is not speaking well. You know that. But even though I'm funny.
Yeah.
One of my talents is not reading hundreds of pages of documents each week and then understanding what I read. So I literally have to read it three times. So you know that. But one of my talents.
You are an excellent conversationalist, I will say.
That's one.
I've been enjoying.
And the other one is, is, you know, it's kind of has to do with like business or sales or problems like, okay, how do I bring people together to actually have a solution to a problem and then actually do it? Cities are notoriously slow and inflexible. So when people yell at me, you, you guys never get anything done. It's almost like cities are designed to not get things done, you know, honestly.
Yeah.
You know how it is, things go slow.
The rules for them require.
But I do spend an awful lot of time behind the scenes begging people to do stuff, let's just say. For instance, I don't like potholes because I feel like I'm going to kill my tires on my bike.
Yeah.
So then I have to have a meeting, I have a meeting with transportation. Why do we have these potholes? Well, we need more budget. So it's always a story, but that's what I spent a lot of my time doing. In case people wonder, very little of our time is spent at city council. And we have a whole load of like time that we have to spend in the back. What I, the bike, my coding daughter calls it the backend. She's a software engineer. We do a lot of backend stuff on city councils. And I love my, my city, I love our current city council. I think we do a great job and, and um, working together and in showing all different sides of people with all different life experiences. Although we are mostly all, if not all owners, and we could use renters.
Yeah, yeah.
That is true.
Well, I, I have this kind of thought kicking around that's maybe touches on a few different things that we've discussed. And we, 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 um, we didn't do a very thorough job on any subject, uh, which is how these things go sometimes. But um, uh, you said that we're not going to be Copenhagen or Utrecht or whatever.
Well, not by tomorrow.
Whatever magical European city, which we were, we're not going to be that way um, overnight because you know, it requires a lot of budget. But one way, one way to think about that is um, those cities tend to be like three or four times denser than Boulder.
Hmm.
And our zoning uh, restricts density. Um, and I think.
Not all of our zoning, just some of ours.
A lot of, a lot of our, well, a lot of the land is, is uh, that's, that's designated residential.
Right.
Um, is zoned in a way that's very inefficient, you know, uh, single family zone, lots, large lots. Um, we could, we could consider um, zoning in a much denser way um, to support the kind of European city that many of us love to travel to, you know, and spend our time in and bike through and walk through. Um, and the, the, the money is, is, if there's a way to think about capturing the value add, um, cause, because if you just take a, if you just take a lot and you say, hey, you can, you can build four times as much housing on this lot overnight. You've just given them basically uh, a huge windfall if they're, if they're an owner of that. You know, if they're a developer, if they're a landowner. Um, and I feel like there's an opportunity to, to capture some of that um, that increase in value um, as a city to say, to say, hey, in exchange for, and I'm not just talking about like, um, uh, what do they call it at the Boulder Junction when you, when you ask for an extra floor? I forgot what the phrase is.
That's okay. Forget everything.
Yeah, for pub, it's like a public benefit, I think is the.
Yeah, it would be.
Um, but uh, you know, if.
What is that phrase?
I think it's public benefit.
Maybe. Community benefit, that's.
Community benefit. That's right. That's right. Um, uh, so that would be one way to frame it, but another way to frame it would be to be like, hey, um, you know, when we, when we allow you to now build more intensively here and there's, there's value added there. The, the city gets something back of, of monetary value or of, uh, you know, whether it's going to be for, for reconfigured streets or um, community land trust type arrangements or whatever. There's lots of ways of thinking about where the money comes from. Because you have, when you have lots of demand and you have a lot of ability to increase supply.
Hmm.
It's kind of just a matter of figuring out, it's not like where does the money come from? Like, there's lots of money waiting to, to pour in. Uh, but it's, it's how do you manage it in a way that's equitable and fair and, and doesn't just, you know, it's not just a handout to developers uh, who, who would come in and build skyscrapers or whatever, whatever ugly monstrosities they would build if you just let them. You know, we want, because we want to build, we want to live in beautiful neighborhoods.
We do.
That, that can, you know, that compete with our European uh, uh, friends in, in uh, overseas, you know, so.
I totally agree with you on that. I feel like after only a year and how long have you been doing this podcast?
A couple of years.
Okay, so.
I'm learning too. This is like, this is like a whole process for me of.
Right. So as much as I, for instance, somebody at the Marcus Caucus said, Tara, why do you um, not want to change parking requirements? So I said, this, I said, maybe I don't even understand that subject.
Oh, yeah.
So then I said, send me every article that you know, and I'm going to read. And I like articles better than books because they end faster. And mostly everybody can say what they said in a book in an article in my, in my opinion, but that's a whole nother story.
You'll be a, you'll be a shoe pista and you'll be, you'll be following Shoop Dog. Do you know about Shoop Dog?
Wait, did I have a train of thought? What, what was I even saying?
Uh, you were talking about the, the Ruckus Caucus invited you minimum parking.
No, so right. So then I started studying about parking requirements. And I can honestly say I didn't know what I was talking about. You know how humiliating it is to talk, uh, let's say at a city council meeting, and then you find out you don't know what you were talking about? That's pretty humiliating. The problem is audience is that every week we get a packet this thick, every week I have to become an expert on like three new things. And that's not that easy, to be honest. I mean, you get your packet and then you have sometimes a lot of links as well.
Yeah, the very, the very first episodes of this podcast, I, I was asking people what they were reading. And Aaron Brockett was like, well, I don't really read much, except for the 500 page packet that I get every, every week. You know, it's like, oh, that's.
I mean, it's, I, I love them. I find them fascinating. Not every subject, but let's say three quarters of them. And especially the housing ones, because I just don't have enough knowledge. You can't get knowledge, so. My, my daughter started in my field. She wanted to learn really fast. And I said, here's the thing about running a mile. You can run a faster mile by studying a lot, but you can't like cut your mouth by cheating and running across the field.
Kill a mile, yeah.
Right? So there's only so fast you can go when you're trying to learn a new subject. But I bet you I know more about the supply chain than a lot of people, but that's not what I need on. So I always ask people for grace and I give grace because thank you, person who said, I don't understand parking requirements. You're exactly right. I didn't.
Well, I followed up and gave you a, a good, some good reading material. Cause, cause the one thing that's on the, the shortlist is Donald Shoup's uh, The High Cost of Free Parking. I don't know.
I am reading that article. You are correct.
That's really, that's a really important must read. And the uh, the Shoop, Shoop Dog is his nickname on the internet. And the people who follow him, I, I've just heard are called shoe pistas. So I'm, I'm hoping that you'll, you'll show up to city council with a Shoop Dog t-shirt on or something like that.
Yeah, except that even if I'm convinced, I still feel like we have to bring people with us and we shouldn't go that fast. Because it get, it, it gets, not only does it get people upset that you're not listening to them, and by upset, I mean screaming at you.
Yeah.
Okay. But we don't want it to be reversed because it didn't work out well, or because people felt like they weren't heard. So that's why it's good to bring them, I'm a Democrat, I'm a democracy person, bring the majority with us. That's all. And there's ways to do that. So I have tours in my neighborhood. Can you visualize this house as two houses? Those tours are going very well. I haven't yet convinced my husband. Sorry, hon. But one thing I've learned is every opinion, I mean, not every, because some people are just terrible racists, but besides those people, most people want to be heard, want to tell you how they feel. And there is something you can learn from everybody. I do think that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
I agree.
And I'm going to give you my phone number, folks out there. Three oh three.
Well, I mean, do you want to do it on, on the internet? You, you do this on the internet too? Okay, go for it.
My city phone number. It's not like my personal phone number. Don't worry. Three oh three nine one two fifty nine sixty. Now you can't text to that number. What I learned is, is when people are outraged, they tend to have really long texts. I can't deal with long texts. No long texts. I have to put the kibosh on it. What's that word? Kai-bash?
Kibosh.
But I love to hear from people because I learned, if you want to teach me, and I said stuff wrong, like for instance, whether the supplier demand is inelastic, call me up right now. I'm waiting to hear from you. Call me.
So Tara, you asked, you asked if I want to, if I shouldn't endorse you. And I, I, I'll just say, if you, if you vote for that five person um, occupancy reform, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll give you my name to put on your website.
Here's the thing, Philip, that I know very well, is when you, and you can ask this to Eric Bud.
Yeah.
Or anybody that changes their mind to their base.
Yeah.
You can't, you can change. You can't, you can change and be flexible and grow, but five is too much for people who voted against bedrooms are for people. I mean, I'll just put it out there. I know it is. They feel not heard. So even four was too much for people, but I said, well, let's try to, you know, let's work a little here and compromise. But I know five is too much for, like, people on the hill. They just are really petrified. Mostly, Philip, because what you said is exactly true. Uncoupling or decoupling, I'm not sure which word it is. Trash, noise, parking from occupancy is a really good thing. The problem is, is we don't have that infrastructure right now. If you would have seen the last council meeting when we discussed it, they said we don't. We absolutely don't have enough, we don't have enough code enforcers. Yes, we should not have them related to the police.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the bigger issue for me is that is are there a lot of empty bedrooms on the hill or in Martin Acres that are just waiting to be waiting to be occupied because, because the ordinance prevents them from being occupied? I mean, I don't even understand the narrative of why occupancy would ruin those neighborhoods, which already seem to have problems that are related that are unrelated to occupancy, because the occupancy laws have been in effect for decades and they are complaining about all kinds of problems on the hill. And, and so like, to me, it just seems like, okay, I would just like to know some numbers about how many empty bedrooms are just waiting around to be occupied. And I think, I think that number is very small.
I hear you, but just hear me out and then maybe you'll vote for me. Just kidding. Um, it's not that I'm against five. It's just that we have a lot of students and all I love nineteen-year-old boys. There's so, I do love them. They are who they are. And asking them to like not be loud with their stereos is, huh, they're nineteen, you know. So the problem is really with the students that um, really party at all hours and play firecrackers. For instance, when I walked the hill with the police, there was these three guys, God bless, they were so nice. They had their door open. There, it was nighttime, their stereo was blasting and I wanted to say, what is wrong with you? What do you think? I wanna hear your music. I don't like your music. But no, I wanted to be cool Tara. Cool Tara went up to the door and said, hey, guys, I didn't even take the police with me. Hey, guys. You want me to call your mother? Can you just close your door for crying out? No, I said, hey, guys, I am gonna call your mother. I did say that. No, a lot of.
You couldn't help yourself.
I couldn't help myself. And they said, oh, and I said, can you just please close your door? So many old people are just trying to sleep right now. And they said, oh, we're so sorry. They were really sorry. They didn't do it on purpose to make people miserable. They're just trying to have a good time. So it isn't just occupancy. It's, it's trying to get students that are fun-loving and living with, let's say, families with babies and, and older people who like fire to live together happily. And that's not that easy to do. We could have a whole nother session on that.
Yeah, well, I think, I think then perhaps, perhaps we agree that the um, the occupancy ordinance doesn't have a lot to do with empty bedrooms, uh, the people's, people's resistance to it. Uh, anyways.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but I'm a reality person and in reality, we don't have the staffing to and do anything about those uh, quality of life issues right now. So people feel like this is all that they have. I mean, honestly, obviously it's not working. But, and you also have to look at other university towns which also have occupancy laws. Why do they have them? We're not the only ones.
They, they were like, oh, because Boulder has it.
No, it's not.
They're gonna look to us.
Listen, don't you have, don't you only wanna do this for now? It's literally now fifteen.
Oh, yeah.
Do people really wanna hear us talk this long? Guess what was the best part about Ruckus Caucus? I was trying to think of a joke, you know, I just, we have one minute to tell people about ourselves. How can you really do that? You might as well just tell a joke that's funny.
Yeah, yeah.
And I got a lot of laughs on my opening joke. I was really happy about that.
You remind me what it was?
Yeah, it wasn't that great, but I'm, oh wait, I remember. I said something like, this is definitely the most fun forum of all the forums. And then I said, in fact, it's the only fun forum. They're really, the forums are dreadful. They really are. And that is soup, that was a lot of fun. When people booed me, I loved it. And I said, come on, come on. Because, you know, to sit there and to have a paddle.
Oh man, the paddles just drive me crazy. Yeah, and I actually, I, I do wanna say, I really admired you for, for holding it up sideways and getting boos. That was, that was great. And I, I, I was too, I wasn't booing you. I was cheering you, because that's.
I did not mind the boos. They were.
That's what I would do. I'd like, you give me a, give me a question that requires a nuanced answer and tell me that. Tell me to say yes or no, and I'm gonna.
It wasn't even that, Philip. Here's the bottom line is, I probably, this is a secret, but I'm telling the whole internet. Is I have a little bit of um, like a auditor, uh, uh, an auditory learning disability, right? So if I'm listening to a question and we're going at that rapid pace and it's, I can't see the words to it. I'm so confused what the question, I, when I said, what was the question? I wasn't trying to buy time. I literally didn't understand.
Well, the, the way they worded the occupancy was a little arcane and I was even confused by it, because I was like, are they trying to say something different than what they normally say? Because like, it sounded like it was worded differently, you know?
They just should have said, do you want three, four, or five or none? That's it. You know, just get to the point. I like people, when you get to the point, just get to the point. What, don't give me government speaker, whatever. Don't try to trick me. So that's that.
Well, yeah, you asked about the length of this podcast. I'm pretty sure this one's, this one's gonna go viral. If, if, if not, none of the others haven't. This one, this one definitely will.
It will not.
I'm teasing you, but yeah.
I, I just, people don't, do they really like to talk about the weeds? Is that the phrase? Be in the weeds with, with the housing?
I just, I, I.
Wait, I, can I leave you with the best story ever? Can I leave you with the best?
Go for it.
So I was at an event, I think it was the Outboulder, possibly the Outboulder. So I always introduce myself and say, what's the most important thing to you, you know? Just so I can get the pulse of the city. I like the pulse.
Mm-hmm.
And the person, she was single, she was renting. Um, she said, it's just too expensive to buy a house here. And I, you know, I can only rent, but I wanna build equity. So I said, well, I have good news for you. We are, we have a project we're working on at twenty-eighth and uh, I, no, where is it? Twenty-eighth and J. Where we're gonna be having middle income units that you can buy. And this is your lucky day. And she said, where is it? I said, yeah, it's a twentieth and J. She goes, what? Not there. That's right by my house. It's gonna ruin my view. I said, listen to me. We, I said, I said everything you would have said. Land is expensive. This is what we, we have to, land is expensive, so it has to be dense, you know, for developers to be able to develop it. Did the whole thing, explained it, didn't get anywhere. So you know, a part of me is like, what do we do? I can't. And this is a person that was begging me for middle income housing that she could build equity, so she didn't have to rent. So that's my story is folks that are trying to be on city council, it's really hard. I'm just saying to please people.
I, I um, I really admire your candor and your um willingness to listen to people and I know that from our initial conversations that uh, we were kind, we, there was kind of a, a gap between where you're, you were on issues and where I am on issues. And I think it's wonderful that we can still have a, a conversation where we explore the terrain and, and hash things out. And I'm, I'm glad you're on city council and I'm I thank you for your service and for your um willingness to listen and to learn and um, I'm, I'm also, like, I don't wanna pretend like I'm just like housing policy genius over here. I'm just like trying to learn too and figure out what makes sense for the city and for um, you know, like, I, I care about my future, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about me, you know, I wanna, I wanna live in a beautiful city that, that I can afford, that I don't get kicked out of because I can't afford it. And um, so, yeah, I don't, um.
Well, my next meeting is not gonna be as fun as this and it's in actually ten minutes and it's gonna be people screaming at me about the day center. So if you wanna know, this is good, this part is the highlight of my day, right here.
Okay, well, good, good luck uh, defending the day center. It's such an important work. Uh, and I'm, I'm really happy it's coming online soon, so. Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com slash Philip Ogrin, which you can find by Duck Duck Going, Linktree, Philip Ogrin, or by visiting sharingboulder.us, where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogrin and the music was created by Nathaniel Ogrin and SAC Lunch. Keep sharing Boulder.